Well, he still is.
Hey.
We do it perfect.
But it's not.
I think that's the start.
It's like crazy. Yeah, they went out today.
Holding up for the.
Yeah, we are really departed.
He's.
Manny DiRalla, yeah.
He's.
Yeah, we were all talking.
Our husband.
You're all down here, we're all walking.
Jeff, Jeff. Turn my watch. He called babies.
They got four, I know it was twenty-three months.
This is maybe a late.
Yeah, I'm saying. So let's see, you had a river.
But there.
I don't know.
You know. The letters are sharing.
Down there. Next one. Grass, they get back. And then we. How is it? How long have they been here on that hang on.
If he needs to play, say, we can be in the gathering. Okay, I was gonna say give. If he needed this, just let him know that.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna take a better house.
Well, it's just what they're calling.
Well, like, yeah.
What about their place?
Boy, I don't worry about that.
If they, um. Is that, um. Especially like that.
Well.
Yeah. That was so. Took it from.
This is the.
They did it all.
And they.
George.
Excellent. And how they. But I always said.
Yeah. And that's on the map. Maybe it was by some fashion.
So.
So Sarah, we're just making the cabinet.
Well, that.
Well, I was someone that. Then I think it's.
Could be anything everybody on the call meeting at work, will everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Well, thanks for everybody coming to the midnight. We're all here. We'd like to move on to adopting the agenda. Does anybody like to make any changes?
I have one change I'd like to make. Let's see, we're at number eight. If we can remove review funds designated to transfer. Oh, well, actually, that's really good. Let's leave that on. I'm sorry. Let's leave that on. Can talk about that a little bit. I have some more information on it, but you can leave it for at least for a discussion at this point. Okay?
Okay, perfect. One thing I'd like to do is make a change with the approval under old business, the resolution for the appointments of commissions. I'd like to move for extending Fred's planning commission turn just above that because we're already gonna have it approved before he continues the discussion, so kind of we're done together. So I kind of just put it above it. We can talk about extending and then vote on the resolution if that works.
Do you want to move all these applications for a well number?
Yeah, a good idea. Yep.
So moves new business items.
Six and seven.
I will make the motion that we set the agenda as revised, moving new business items six and seven under code business number nine.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, next is adopting of the consent agenda minutes and staff notes. There were not any changes or any questions on the consent agenda at the center?
Could I just speak to one item? I don't know if I need to make a motion to open it or.
Yeah, no, no, sorry.
So when I was going through, um, through this, the, um, there was a large payment named for a debt service. And I was a little concerned when I saw the negative balance there, so I, uh, negative fund balance, so I dug into it a bit. And I met with Michelle today and she ran me through Banning and we looked back historically and evidently dating at least back to 2021. We've combined two different bond payments into one account. And so she's gonna have to go back and journal entry and correct that. And the ones they were, they're putting it all under the 504 fund, the city building's debt service. There's some tax increment bonds that were also being paid under that account that should have been up under 399, the TM district, one through four housing fund. So she's gonna confirm with Brad Hapdo that what I see is accurate. If that all transpires, that 504 fund balance will, um, will go back in the positive again. Unfortunately, the other one, one is a negative. So just for proper and accurate accounting purposes, um, we were only, Banning only goes back three years. So we didn't have time to try to go back and look at earlier years, but it seems like something that historically had been happening.
Okay.
And it's just been repeated. Michelle didn't know any different because her two predecessors have done the same thing.
Sure.
So.
So if I can add, um, what are the funds that will be bolstering this 504?
So.
We've got 399, correct?
Yep, so.
Right.
This was all a little new to me, so bear with me. But when we get a property tax settlement from the county, there's a portion of that that goes to the 399. And then there's a portion of it that goes to the 504. And it's, this was, these are 2023 numbers, so I'm not sure what 2024s are. But this was the November settlement and the 399 account was thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And the 504 was twenty-six thousand, uh, six seventy-eight and forty-eight cents.
That's what the balances were.
That's what half of the property tax.
Okay.
Payment was.
Okay.
So when we budgeted, um, this year, we budgeted, appropriately for the 504 fund and I believe appropriately for the 399, although I hadn't, didn't have time to dig into that one. But it should be right on budget for 2024 in the 504.
And I know I've asked Michelle about this, the negative balance on the 604 for well number four debt service fund. That actually looks a little bit better than it has in the past. I don't know if there's. Have you looked into that? Do you want to?
I haven't. It's on my list to talk to her about.
Okay.
Those are the, um, the, what is it? A twenty-dollar fee on our water bill, ten-dollar fee. There's a ten-dollar fee on our water bill that goes towards that, so, um, yeah, that's another one that I just want to make sure the accounting has been correct and that those funds are being distributed appropriately. So doesn't affect our entire cash balance, but just getting it in the right funds. But that's all I have. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate you looking into that. Any, uh, any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to old business. We will start with an update from Elizabeth on the business park.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is not the first time the business park has come to the council, so we're just moving forward from here. We have multiple people who are interested in purchasing land in the business park, more people interested than what we have planted to get up early. Um, we started working with developer Mike Brady, tossed around some ideas, we're kind of in the brainstorming stage. Um, then we've had some more people interested as well, um, one being Joel Hirsch from Hirsch Ironworks. I'll have him come up and speak. Um, Shontae Trail is here as well. Uh, I'm not sure Andrew Nagy is here. Nope, there he is. And, um, and then we'll hear from Mike Brady. And then after hearing from everybody, but I'm really looking from council today is direction. Um, because we were okay with some of Mike's ideas, or, you know, brainstorming, you know, just, oh, we might have to do a little bit more research on this or that. And his idea so far would require a land unit development that's work on the ordinance. It doesn't really fit in the current zoning ordinance. Um, also, since the last meeting, I have touched base with Nancy Hoffman from the county, uh, and she'll come up here and speak as well. And there is just some more information that I learned from her that might support maybe not doing a plan unit development because there was some additional paperwork that I'll let her explain more thoroughly as well. So, um, you don't have to, like, make a motion to decide exactly who you're going to sell it to today. But you do want to see a direction. So are you leaning towards, you know, are you open to having Hirsch Ironworks in the, in the business park? Um, and if you do, how do you want to do it? I would just encourage you to come up with questions that you have for Mr. Hirsch, kind of start some research. Um, just really making sure we're, have a plan. So just kind of brainstorming for a plan and moving forward with that. So if you take those steps to get to that final decision. Um, and then with Mike Brady, um, give him some direction to something to chew on. Um, what are you looking for? Stuff like that. So I wrote in an email between Troy and I, um, sort of rewriting an update. Uh, the email pretty much provides a thorough update. I'm not gonna read it because you get very bored. I did, it's very long. Um, but some of the key points that I pointed out were compat, um, compatibility with surrounding uses. Um, you know, there's the Excel station to the east, sewer ponds to the north. Um, that's, you know, maybe I say an undesirable area for, say, housing maybe, and that would be a good area for manufacturing. But we still have to consider there are dwellings within, like, three hundred feet of the business park. So noise would be something to consider. How can we mitigate some noise? Um, maybe really dig into that. Uh, that's really one of my only concerns with Hirsch Ironworks is the noise. And he, we've been talking and working on ways to mitigate that noise. I can let him explain it a little bit more, but we've got loading and unloading a metal and that's just, you know, naturally a little loud. And a few different ways to do it. He can explain more on that. Um, so the question is, does it really qualify as light manufacturing or is it more heavy manufacturing? The ordinance is a little ambiguous and that's one of the things that Center City had just said, you know, go forward with caution. You know, between us and him, what are our very clear expectations? You know, and he's been very respectful. He offered to, you know, reach out to residents around him because he doesn't want to be somewhere incompatible either. So just, um, this is a great spot for him if we can make sure we address the noise. And the existing ordinance, he fits within the existing ordinance. All of the proposed, um, people speaking to, uh, something that we talked about is, you know, possibly if I, uh, we could add the permitted use, it's like automatically allowed, we could maybe look into changing that into a conditional use. Because it's those, like, noisy situations, those odd, um, you know, something an ordinance can't cover for every business you could possibly think of. That's the beauty of conditional uses. That's where you want it, not something that's just a rubber stamp. But hey, this is a unique business with maybe a unique set of problems and we're gonna put some unique conditions on it. Um, and Joel said he would be open to that, but that's just an idea right now. He just, you know, he does fit it within the ordinance. And that's all I have, really, just given, um, you know, if we wanted, and the other thing is, do we want to sell it to, you know, these separate contractors directly or since we were working with Mike Brady, do we want to integrate their businesses into his plan? So that would be another thing just to think about as you're moving forward with that. Because we did start to work with Mike Brady a while ago. Um, also, uh, we, Mike Brady started working on the east half of the business park. And Hirsch Ironworks said the west half is too small for his operation, so Mr. Hirsch would need the east half and then we would probably put Mr. Brady from the west half. So, but that's just my direction and I'll let you guys chew on that.
So I have a couple of questions if I may. So when, so the block two lot one, block two lot two and lot C is now too small? Is that correct or is that, is that big enough for Hirsch?
I gotta find it out.
That would be, so that would be the east side. Oh, so that would be the east side. And that's good.
So the east half is big enough for him?
Okay, good.
Yes, and he said that would cover some future growth as well.
And then how many, you mentioned residents within three hundred feet. How many?
Ooh, wouldn't do the three hundred feet upper.
Two.
Do you have?
I don't, but, I mean, there's that big strip between our business park, um, that Excel ones. And then there's road and then another strip.
There, I know I mentioned the closest one where to be to purchase path.
Okay.
Would be at three hundred, about three hundred feet from the Jizz parcel.
So it's possible that they're actually outside of the three hundred, whether within the three hundred and we're looking at about one or two households, one or two homes?
Yeah, there's like, I think, a set of four that are, so the first one would be at like about the three hundred foot mark.
Okay.
So three hundred foot and beyond.
I think that they were, the noisy work was placed ideally in a lot that would put it even further away from the residences.
Sure, maybe we can design it to where it would be on the other side. Um, yeah, that would be just my main concern is whether loading and unloading, like, how could those residences, how far is that for them? What about doing like a site visit for, and maybe when Joel comes up, we can ask him more about it, but maybe a site visit would be appropriate. Um, we could have him load and unload and even measure desults from three hundred feet away.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, we can talk about that later, right? Um, I do believe Hirsch is up against some time deadline.
Yeah.
So let's put that in consideration as well.
Any other questions for Elizabeth? Uh, we'll, uh, have Nancy come up.
Okay.
Fill us in on some information. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Nice to be here. Uh, I had talked to Elizabeth a little bit about, um, the industrial park and it seemed like there were a lot of things that weren't for sure known. I suppose it's not documented really well. And sometimes it's just that institutional knowledge that, um, that we go off of. And so, um, you had a chance to read the memo, but I think I'm just gonna kind of run through that anyway not to, not to regurgitate that back to you. But I think it's kind of important to, uh, you know, why did we do the industrial park and how that was put together and then some of the, the grant that surrounds it. So. Um, so, you know, economic developers often, um, look to manufacturing, uh, industrial as their primary target. Uh, all businesses are important and we want to help them all and we want them all to be strong, but manufacturers tend to bring a higher tax base as well as, uh, better paying jobs than a lot of the other, um, other businesses. Um, in here, I quoted the National Association of Industrial and Office Properties. I always think this really kind of drives it home on why we go out there commercial and industrial. So for every dollar of property taxes paid by a business, the community only pays about twenty-seven cents to supply services. When it's a residential, for every dollar spent, it's a dollar seventeen paid by, uh, paid by the communities. Um, so it's like, you're actually paid more out than you're bringing in. Um, and this is just because they require so many services, residential, um, residential duty, you have school buses, you have emergency hospitals, fire trucks, whatever it might be, parks, um, just so many things that the community puts money into. And you really don't get a return back for that. Where you put up a manufacturing facility and what kinds of services do you really need? Maybe a snowplow goes by. There might be an occasional need for police or something, but that just, it's just so much less than for the residential. So it's just really, um, really the way to grow your property taxes and, uh, economics and your community. I did throw together some numbers. I was looking at what the, um, estimated market value of your commercial and industrial is. And it's, uh, your commercial is five point nineteen percent. You know, but, you know, I always think in Taylor's Falls and in Lundstrom, the economic engine is really that downtown. But for, um, industrial is point seventy, uh, point twenty-seven, so very, very small amount in Taylor's Falls. Um, typically, like, I think, um, statewide, the average of those together is like nineteen percent. Shasaw County as a whole, we don't, we don't quite make that either because we're such a commuting community that I remember seeing a study and in Wyoming, like ninety-six percent of the people commute out for jobs. So they're, you know, they're just not working here. Um, and countywide, it's like seventy-six percent of the people commute out. So we're, we're always trying to find those businesses so people don't have to drive out of the county in order to work and get a good job. You know, have a really good job and paying job, so. Um, so that's why we always focus on, um, manufacturing. Some communities might look for healthcare or something else, but it's still the same reason. Um, tax base and jobs, good paying jobs. Um, the industrial park, I'm not sure how much history you have now, but in two thousand and eleven, Excel Energy purchased the thirty-two acres where they're, um, they have their substation. And not quite how that all worked, I wasn't here quite yet, but they, uh, I don't know if it was negotiated or if the city actually purchased the property from Excel, um, to be used for an industrial park. And then they put in the, um, water, sewer, roads, everything through the use of a tax abatement off of that substation. And the county participated in that as well. So the city put in about sixty thousand dollars over ten years, I'm sorry, sixty thousand a year. And the county put in thirty thousand a year for about ten years to pay off the bonds for those, um, for the infrastructure to that park. And that's why the selling it for a dollar came up. It's been all paid for, um, you know, how do we attract a business? And it might be just selling it for the dollar or nothing, I guess, where the dollar always comes from. I suppose you have to exchange something.
Transactions.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. And, um, so that's why it was set up the way it is. Um, they also had received a grant that the past mayor worked very hard for many years, um, going to the legislature, trying to find some funds to assist in attracting businesses. Um, there's a number of programs around the state like border cities, this type of thing, and they just couldn't quite get it done for Taylor's Falls. It didn't fit the mold of, like, you know, working with Sioux Falls and the, you know, the North Dakotas, uh, sorry, South Dakota side. Um, so anyway, they did negotiate this hundred thousand dollars total to be used to attract businesses. And, um, I don't know if it's written anywhere or if, um, this is just how, uh, the past mayor and, and staff came up with this. But they, the plan was to give twenty-five thousand dollars to each of the front four lots over five years. So we get five thousand dollars a year for five years. And it would just be those front four lots. The back two lots were still available for industrial, but not part of that hundred thousand. So if you have any questions on that or if you were all aware of that already, and I'm just.
I would, I would add to that, um, that the, uh, the grant came from D.
Right.
The Department of Employment and Economic Development, which is a finance arm of the state. And so, yeah, it's five thousand dollars for the front four lots, um, to be used for, um, tax reimbursement. So they would, you know, pay their property taxes and then apply to D for reimbursement out of that five thousand. So it's up to five thousand, uh, till we reach a twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So D has that money in escrow, so to speak?
So to speak, okay.
So. So that's, that's what I had. I don't know if you had any other questions or if you were expecting any other, anything else from me in particular?
I think about the thing we, wait, Tim, do you know where that money is?
The hundred thousand? I, I. It's, it's, it's in a fund that D has to, you know, provide for economic development. And it was an agreement made between the former mayor and D to hold that money until we, um, found, uh, people to come into the business park.
Okay.
So they, D has the money.
Okay, great, thank you.
And as far as we know, that's still available?
Yes.
Right, and when was this agreement made?
I just found this.
Thank you.
Um, today, actually. It's a whole file. Um, March fourth, twenty thirteen. This was actually the bill, but it was approved from the House and the Senate.
So we're coming up on, well, over ten years now.
Yeah, I know, now since that was, it doesn't feel like it's been that long, but it probably was.
Well, I don't know, it doesn't get asked. Right, it's been ten years, it's been available. So that's good, that's still available.
Right.
I, I guess, I just wanna, and I, and I, I think I share some of this with Nancy, but I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity. Um, I think this is, this is a great opportunity for, for the city. And I'm, I'm glad you explained the, the, the property taxes and how that affects the residents. I think that, that helped a lot. I had to read it a couple of times. But, um, I mean, we've got some more to listen to, but I, I just think this is a, this could be a very good opportunity for the city of Taylor's Falls and, and, uh, and the county as well. Nancy, do you know what the calculation for industrial manufacturing type of properties are compared to residential? How much potentially, how much revenue something like this could bring to the city or who did we talk to about that?
Yeah, um, Chase Peliquin in the assessor's office. In fact, I, I got the message from him, but apparently he's out of the office. I thought maybe he could give me some other good information, but there's a formula for calculating it and it's, it's different for industrial than it is for, um, residential. And, um, so it's, I, I don't even want to, um, try to guess because, um, I know it's changed and I probably like to give you some old formula that's a little easier to place, but Chase Peliquin has just excellent work. But then he would, he could give you, um, some samples and comparisons and I can set him up for that too. Um, you know, so you can really see the numbers.
Thank you.
But typically a manufacturer is gonna be a bigger building, kind of heavy duty, um, taking more space and then plus having a, a little different ring on it than residential. You know, collect more from, from business.
Okay, thanks. It's all right with council, I can give Chase the call and read back to Sherry and she can let everybody know what I find out.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions for Nancy? Lee?
No.
I appreciate you coming in.
Sure, and I'll hang around. I want to hear everybody.
Okay, ready?
Come up with some questions, please.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, we will move on to our first, uh, Hirsch Ironworks. Welcome.
I have some attachments that Mr. Hirsch sent me after the packet went out. And there's some extras back there for anybody who wants to see.
I'm reading what I heard from the meeting council. Unfortunately, Joel is a big guy in Boston on his brother's angle. Unfortunate circumstance, I'll call him back on Sunday, but just didn't happen. So I'd like to make it clear, our interest initially was in the north lots. We would only if you guys may have some future planning with water ponds, not wanting to get involved in that. But if possible, our interest was in the north lots, but we would fit in the east lots. We're mainly a manufacturer of steel products, mostly structural steel. We stick to smaller stuff, schools, renovations, things like that, and metal railing. We partner with some contractors in the area. Like in this past week, Joel and Boston, we do do jobs out of state. We do jobs in the west, some in Texas and in the Boston, New York area. But we do usually stick to the city, in northern Minnesota. So Elizabeth, if I can pass out, our initial investment for the property would be one and a quarter to one and a half million. We'd like to do a ten thousand, twenty thousand square foot main building. I think that's in the rendition that you guys got. That's our rough plan. Obviously, we'd like to change with what you guys would see, move the, um, and then we'd like to do a twenty-five hundred to five thousand square foot office. And then a separate building for paint to contain all that and to neutralize any waste properly. Our main focus since we started this in twenty-one was growth and creating jobs. Year a lot, people wanna make money. I got in this business because I felt that myself and my coworkers weren't trapped, treated. And that is our focus to create jobs that are well-paying. We pay far higher than anyone in the area and we wanna continue that. So as we continue that, we would like to grow initially once we move into Taylor's Falls. We're very limited in Center City, we'd like to grow out of job initially. Two office, three in the shop. After initial move-in, we've seen steady growth in the past three years. We don't see that growth dropping off. Our markets only get bigger. As we've partnered with local contractors, Cross Anderson, Rocon, Warson, these big jobs, they want to provide us more business. Our current company revenue is four thousand. Our projection for twenty twenty-four is five million, uh, politics, four million. Currently, we have twelve employees in Center City. We are capped there. We're on pace. Fortunately, the council sees that we don't fit. We are on a bit of a time crunch. We are set between this property or moving across the border. This is our employees' home. We don't wanna bring them across the border. We don't wanna add any like view. More probably, more of our employees live in about ten to fifteen minute radius, part of Center City shop. And this move would only lower that number. Most of our employees are in southeast Linnstrom, Schaefer. We have one in Taylor's Falls and we'd like to keep it that way. Seven and a half percent we've held. We see that continuing for growth and only adding more employees as the years go on. So currently, we do have an issue with Center City. We wanna get front of all that. And we want to work with you guys, see what's under your goals are for the property. What would you like to see? We have sound tested our current facility and you guys are all welcome to come out and see those sound tests. Biggest issue that we have, Elizabeth spoke on that, is unloading trucks. While we load maximum five trucks a week, it is loud for five minutes of that forty-minute load. It's just to remove beams from interlock beams. And at the property line now, you have to come out the facility, we're about fifty feet from where we unload. We don't see over seventy decibels at that time. And while it can be frustrating, a fence which we would like to implement in Taylor's Falls would help greatly. Tests around surrounding shops have shown to decrease almost by fifty decibels. So we obviously would be ready to work with you guys on that.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
Does that type of operation generally happy, happen Monday through Friday days? Or any time during the week, during the days, or is it evening?
So unloading is our loudest. That's Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
It's one truck most weeks, we might do a second truck.
What time of day?
So we do not get any trucks before ten o'clock due to where our suppliers are. And we don't see those trucks after one p.m. or noon. That three-hour slot, all of our trucks hit it, parents get in and out of the truck. And they're full trucks. And again, it doesn't take us any more than an hour to get that truck unloaded. And that would truly be what puts our business, I believe, in L two. Otherwise, our business is contained in the building. We can't, we can't weld, we can't blow our saws outside to cut. We can't use any of our machines to form outside. All our business is contained inside. So that, our biggest problem is loading and unloading trucks. If we were permitted to have a fence where we currently are, I don't believe we have that issue.
So there, there seems to be a lot of noise about noise. Some of the difficulties you're dealing with where you're at now, how many of, are those related to noise?
We can't bring the people that are a problem, but yes, I believe it's related, related to noise.
Okay.
Related to noise and the initial fact that we don't belong there. As I stated previously, we belong in L one. That small window of our week is when we don't belong in L one.
Oh, so, yeah, that's what I'm kinda wondering, but how much of it is noise and how much of it is just political noise?
Correct. I mean, um, not to bore you guys, but while we've been there, one complaint has been substantiated where the sheriff's department has came out. And that was at six twenty-four a.m. New management's in the building. She didn't really know how to direct the employees. He asked to go out and move a beam off a trailer. Wouldn't have permitted her there. That was the only issue. It wasn't because it was annoying, loud, it was a small beam. It was just before that seven o'clock start time. This has been the only case when Washington County comes out to write a report. We don't have any other substantiated claims. There's been claims of hundreds of phone calls. We call Washington County, or Chicago County. They say that we don't have it. That was, it came out, I believe he had two calls that day. That was, that was all we heard of it.
Can, can you speak to any of this, Nancy? Do you, are you aware of anything?
Not, not much more. I have talked to the mayor about it a little bit and they just felt like the site that they're at isn't a good site. You know, they'd love to see him in their industrial park.
Right, so it's not so much about noise really, that doesn't seem to be, you know, the main issue?
Um, you know, I just don't know for sure. I've just had light conversations with the mayor.
Do, do you only have one shift or are you running three shifts or?
We only have one shift.
Okay.
Currently adopted to Center City start times seven to five, really.
So the noise issue is really my concern. Elizabeth, do you have anything to add to what this gentleman said today about the noise complaints?
Not really. I had a conversation with Center City a while ago and it was, you know, you just, you know, the noise is happening.
So, you know, we would love to have you in our park. But we need to, you know, everybody get on the same page and.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I think our, our current facility is, would be a great testing ground for that. Especially as we're gonna construct the fence. And we want our future location to be friendly to not only us, but our neighbors. We don't wanna have problems with the neighbors. We don't wanna intrude on their life.
Yeah.
We wanna come in four days a week, work ten hours, go.
Do you know how many houses you have within three hundred feet right now?
Let's say seven, I believe six. And our property currently is across Oasis Road, if any of you guys are familiar. So the property's on Pioneer Lake would then be a lot closer, whether if our property lives on the other side of the road.
And looking to close to Center City and move over here or just keep Center City and expand over here?
I will keep the property, the use will change.
So you continue to manufacture there?
No, first I'm gonna move to Taylor's Falls, but there's a.
What, curious about, you say fence. What, what's a fence look like? I mean, how is it?
A fence to us would have insulated panels. And it would be a steel frame with those insulated panels inserted inside and steel panels inside and the outside. We want that noise to hit that fence and go off. We don't want any intrusion to the outside.
And there could be also landscaping to be done around there that mitigate the issues?
Sure.
You say you're on a crunch for time. When would you wanna be, I mean, break a ground like March, April? Is that, I mean, when do you wanna move in? What's, what's that look like?
So ideally, of course, you guys have to make your decision. We'd like to be proceeding in two months. And we'd like to break ground on this no later than August. August, we would like to be moving forward. We would like to have land cleared, site prep, breaking ground in August.
Do you work with local contractors to build your building or do you go outside of?
So while they are ways away, we work with Sheen Construction, they call. They've done a couple of buildings of these different properties for us, storage yards, things like that. And we've worked with them as a new partnership. We would have to power pick the steel and then they would come in and do the G C side of the thing.
So you would also need space for a loading zone and employee parking and stuff like that?
Yeah, we would, we would probably utilize the whole lot.
So placing the loading zone where you locate a loading, loading zone could be something that would also help mitigate noise?
Correct. Ideally, the loading zone where we would go is the back corner of that property to pull out the trucks there and unload the trucks there. And carry those guys moving back to their location.
Yeah.
And we could also do an interior fence. We'd have no problem building a second gate inside of our fence. We'd like strong property fence and then having a dedicated loading zone to further mitigate the noise.
Sure.
While we feel that one fence would substantially trap the noise outside of, especially in the residential area. I believe we have one house to the east in these lots. And the west house might be three hundred feet possibly. Now, as I said, the driveway across is pretty long, so I don't know if he's quite that close.
Just so I understand, what you've described correctly, would the office building be freestanding and that connected to the manufacturing?
Correct. We have the office building freestanding and the paint building freestanding, containing the shop noise itself. The shop would be free of air conditioning and wouldn't have any outside projections coming in. So we'd be able to completely insulate that shelf, even the solid garage door, it can contain far more noise in the morning now. I believe, um, my shoe been attached. I can get you on a sheet that Elizabeth handed out, you can see our current sound output that's a little produced. So our inside isn't gonna change. Seventy-five, we're currently constructive, four and a half inch walls. We have a little bit of addition on the walls, a little bit thicker than our ten, two-by-four sheeting. And standard fiber insulation. If we were to spray foam, we'd be able to contain far more noise in there. Engineer's putting about a twenty-five decibels drop.
And your filtration for, is some of your prime and?
Full containment, so we would do a, it's not in the past, it's a containment booth. While it does push waste and fluid or air out, it contains it in the building. And then its filters removed and they have to be disposed of properly to the correct contractor.
Couple more, the initial investment, you've got one point two to one point five million. How, how soon could you do that? Is, are you ready to go with that?
We are ready to go.
Okay, so you have that ready to go, I mean, you, you could start tomorrow if you.
Correct. That, that's the basis for our time crunch. We're growing out of this building. We're retaining our current employees. If we retain our current employees without projections, we need a bigger building because we have more employees to hire, to support new business, and we need a new facility.
You mentioned you had other locations or other businesses, what?
What? We have, we have one other storage yard to mitigate. We had two, we can down to one, just to mitigate Center City a little bit.
The new jobs would be an addition to the staff that's moving over here?
Correct.
Other questions, Tim?
No more questions, I don't think.
Lee?
No.
Well, thank you. We'll, we have plenty to discuss. I appreciate it.
Can I just add? And Tim, if you pull up the Shisago County T R S map, you could actually get that number measuring greater than fifty feet. It's pretty quick to look up. If you guys wanted to look it up now, or I can grab a laptop too.
I'll work on that while we're.
Do you have the property copy? By chance?
On the side of my desk.
Okay, I've got it longer. All right. Let's move on to our next gentleman here, Sean.
King Kind. Good evening. I'm Sean Tindrum. I'm the owner of Midwest Holdings Company LLC. Twenty-seven years of experience in the cannabis industry. I'm really an advisor consultant for King Kind, not ownership of any type. We are currently building our first facility in Shisago City. And we're looking to build an identical second location in Taylor's Falls. You can see the elevations portion of the package you guys received. We've engaged a turnkey development from Arizona as a consulting firm. We hired Greg Boss from Frontier Commercial Construction as our G C. And we're currently engaged with medical design as our architect. We are proceeding in Shisago with our first facility to be operated by King Kind. And if we could get another facility operational, we have a multitude of operators looking to get in to our facility, second facility. We would be looking to break ground as soon as possible and as soon as weather allows and permits can be acquired. We're currently working with Nancy Hoffman, John Peckman, Leah Nelson in Shisago City and County for our Shisago facility. And Elizabeth Haas invited me this evening. Uh, so what we're looking from you guys is a pre-approved location for a second cultivation facility. And the details are in the back here.
When do you think you'll be constructing this pre-approved construction facility?
We're ready to go as soon as the weather clears and we can break ground. As soon as we get. As soon as we can clear permits and weather allowing, we're ready to go.
And when you would you start growing?
Uh, licensing isn't going to happen until sometime in Q one twenty twenty-five and it's a three-month process. So likely, we wouldn't be cultivating until the second quarter of twenty twenty-five.
Do you know what your initial investment would be?
Uh, the cost of construction for the entire facility is somewhere between eighteen to twenty million.
As far as employment, what, what are you looking at as far as bringing jobs to Taylor's Falls? How many?
Uh, when the whole facility of thirty thousand square foot of campy is established, it'll be up to eighty full-time employees.
And I know we just, we got this, Elizabeth, is there copies out for anybody that wants to see this?
I got an extra one I can.
No, it was separate.
So I just want to check out anybody.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know about anything.
Okay, no, exactly. Um, okay, well, if anybody wants this, we'll make sure that you get a copy of it.
And we have much more detailed business plans, it's just the icebreaker.
What, what attracts you to Taylor's Falls? We met this last summer, so.
Well, you guys kind of captured my heart when we were first gonna start off here and then the Hay chicks building fell through for environmental reasons. And frankly, we're happy it did because we don't think that was big enough to support our dreams, so we're looking to go bigger.
And what lots would we be looking at here that we, do we know?
What lots would you be looking at?
You know, I'm not even aware of what is available, it's all at short notice and, but it would require somewhere between
How many acres?
Three to five acres.
So the east three lots, um, are, I believe, if I did my math right, three and a quarter acres and total. You know, point, the front two are like point eight seven.
Okay, so you'd be interested in probably the whole west half?
As much land as we can get. There are other options for different licensing types that we could tone down our ambitions. We're asking for, we're gonna ask for it all.
Yeah, because how many acres are those front two each?
I believe the front two are point eight seven each and the last one might be point, one point four. Hold on one second. Okay, the first, the southernmost parcel on the west side is point eight five acres. The middle one is point eight seven. And the north one, out lot, is one point five two.
These are all west, right?
Those are all the west, the west three.
So we started working with Mike Brady and now we have two people who could pretty much fill that entire business park, so.
Twenty years of experience, where else, what other cities, states?
Uh, I currently own, I had just liquidated cultivation facilities in California and Michigan in twenty twenty-three. And I've experienced in every angle of the cannabis industry, cultivation, retail, transportation, testing.
Are there any odds of not getting your license?
Yes, that is a real possibility, but we think we're, we've reached a critical mass that nobody else has achieved, so they would, I think, welcome us. We're so far along the road and so far ahead of anybody else, I don't see them having a whole lot of other options besides us.
I got a, just a quick question, if you could comment on or elaborate a little bit, you've got, um, I'm not sure what Paige just said, but Minnesota is giving a narrative that cannabis businesses will be allowed to operate without city permission. King Kind Incorporated does not want to take that approach. Uh, can you talk more about that? Just your perceptions of the state, you know, and what their narrative is and how yours differs?
The O C M, Office Cannabis Management, has sent out guidelines that if the business follows those, the local government really has no say over your ability to conduct business in their city. And they add specific language that you can't put a moratorium on cannabis businesses, you can't stop it if they proceed with the right standards, however you wanna describe it.
Are you speaking, um,
Mainly just to schools, most to some parks. Uh, this is just cultivation, there's no public interface, no retail. As I've understood, you are going to allow one retail location and potentially already have that candidate semi in place?
No, we haven't even broached that topic yet.
Would we have been hearing?
We have two permits for the non-intoxication, the hemp direct.
Yeah, yeah, products. So no, we're speaking only cultivation, no public interface of any type.
Do you have to provide security?
Yes, sir. The state requires a very elaborate security requirements.
Is that onsite or is it electronic or?
Both. Certain level of camera systems and on-staff security or onsite security and fencing.
Does that require a huge amount of water usage?
It does, but we're also able to capture and reuse a majority, or whatever we can hold, we can capture and reuse infinitely effectively.
There's no spillage at any time, not even a possibility?
No, it'll all be contained and it's reverse osmosis when it comes in and reverse osmosis when it goes out. So it's probably cleaner when it goes out than when it came in, honestly.
Um, you've got it here, um, King Kind Incorporated tends to contribute additional donations to help strengthen the surrounding community. Do you have any examples of that?
Uh, we made a pitch at the North Branch City Council in August and they had talked about the need for another police officer. And one of their fire trucks had a busted axle, which we had negotiated with them would allow us to do this in North Branch. That we would hire the police officer or them and pay for the axle on their truck to get fixed and things like that.
Did they give you a reason why they decided not to move over with you?
They didn't decide not to, they just haven't been moving as fast as Shisago City, so we ultimately chose Shisago for our first location. Because they really sped us through everything and they've actually been doing legwork for us and helping us with certain aspects.
So is this location, how, how certain are you that this location would be viable for you and if so, what, what's the timeframe?
Any location with the proper amount of space would be workable for us. And our timeline is, we'd like to be first to market, so we need about a year for construction and outfitting the building. So we would wanna get started in April, May of twenty twenty-four.
So you'd be doing these in tandem?
Yes, sir. We required funding for the Shisago facility and our financier wants us to do another.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Do you, do you have any, just one more, do you have any reservations about the state? Are you concerned about any of the legislation, um, not coming fast enough, not going through, you know, this not, not being possible?
Uh, Anguas, they, they have, is actually good for us, it gives us more time to get ready. So I don't have any concerns on that. And of course, the licensing, it's walking out on a ledge and it's taking the fate that we can get this done. And there aren't gonna be other entities that are gonna be able to fill the roles that we can, so they ultimately will have to choose us. We have hired the Cente Law Firm and Jason Tersec, maybe you've heard of him, but we've pulled many people. And there are not other companies pursuing a cultivation license as far as we know, except for Highway thirty-five in Grand Rapids and a new company called M N Technology out of Cohasset. And then, of course, the native facilities.
And this is growing only, it's just cultivation, not any, but there's another license for taking your product and?
Correct. You're not allowed to vertically integrate, so you get to pick cultivation, retail, transportation, or a mezzo license, kind of a mixture of all, but on a much smaller level.
Yeah, just one more. I, I can't remember where I read it, but, so the state taxes would tax your business. And then a portion of that tax gets reimbursed to the municipality that you're resident in?
This is something I think Nancy can help with, but as I understand it, that a county or the money is distributed to counties and cities that have cannabis businesses in them. And if you don't, you don't receive any of the money, so. The fact that you're in Shisago County, you probably would receive something even from our facility in Shisago. But then you'd get more if you had a facility in Taylor's Falls and vice versa for Shisago.
I think it's kind of like solar facilities, you get a production tax off of it and it, you know, additionally, so it's similar to that.
I, I suppose that's good where the other building fell too, because we were proceeding, as the mayor knows and, you know, without even consulting you guys. So I guess that's good, it put the brakes on us and we can go through the proper channels.
Yeah, I was just gonna say from his own perspective, um, you know, if it's a quiet business and there are residences nearby. So that would even buffer, say, if we went with Mr. Hirsch, that would buffer his building, we'd buffer the other building noise. And he would be creating any extra noise on the west.
It'd be expense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe the resident to the west of the west three parcels is under ninety feet away from the west property line.
Another frequently asked question is the odor, but we can guarantee there will not be odor detectable anywhere outside of, so edit, there's no noise associated with it. Our goal is to be anonymous, to not be seen. That's what makes us most effective.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Didn't we ask Kennedy, add a contractor? Okay, you were, do you have a contractor?
I do.
You would add a?
It's, uh, Frontera, where is it here? Frontera Commercial Construction.
Frontera. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So getting back to the, um, distance from the parcels, um, for the Hirsch. So I'm gonna try to describe this. So out lot, the out lot on the east side, so the third lot here. The southeast corner of that lot to the corner of the property line to the nearest resident to the east is four, about four hundred and thirty feet. From the southeast corner of the middle lot to that same, um, point is two hundred and sixty-seven feet. So that would be within three hundred.
And is that to the east or the west?
That would be east.
That would be to the east, so we're on the other side of the water pond?
Uh, no, it's, um, both of those measurements are run kind of southeast. Um, I wish I could project it up. But the bottom two parcels would be within three hundred feet of the first resident, not the second one.
But not out lot C, that would be?
That would be far, in excess of three hundred feet, yep.
And could you measure the west side of the east half, just the nearest residence on the left?
Um, of the first parcel or any of the parcels? Because that was the ninety feet.
From here to this residence?
From which one?
To, yeah, I wanna see if this is the house.
I believe this is the house.
Okay, yeah, so basically from the house to where Hirsch would be in the west direction, which would be very buffered by any other residents.
So, for example, here?
Yeah, there.
Two eighty?
Yeah, okay, that's, what if that, approaching three hundred from both directions for purchase is within here, so doesn't it, sorry?
And, and we're still talking about one, basically, one or two? How many, one or?
Really only one to the west.
One to the west, four to the east.
Four to the east, yeah. So is this something, if we don't do a C U B, that doesn't go to planning, we don't do?
Nope, you sell the property and they can, they have to hold their building permits and zoning permits for the actual structures. But that use does not need to go before planning or city council. Because it's, it is clearly written because it's a permitted use, not an additional use.
So if my measurements are accurate, there are two properties on the east that fall within three hundred feet of all three parcels, basically, um, but only one to the west. There's a rather large property.
Why is the three hundred feet critical?
We were just talking about three hundred feet, I don't, it came up somewhere.
You found it out.
I think it's a three fifty. So typically, when you have like a conditional use permit and they're putting out public notices, you have to notify the surrounding properties within three hundred and fifty feet usually. The data behind why is three hundred and fifty, I'm not sure.
Do you have thirty-three, man, that we have?
Yeah, and there wouldn't, yeah, unless we had changed it to where it would be a conditional use permit, we would not need to notify. Um, Mr. Hirsch had voluntarily, um, said he would survey or notify if he did anything within a thousand feet. And so, so that would be a long ways, but, you know, that just kind of shows his willingness to reach out and see if they, he thinks that would be a problem with anybody living nearby.
All right, thank you. Andrew, Nick?
I just had some questions and really most of them would be answered, so.
What, well, I, I'm curious, what's the storage yard look like?
Well, I wanna just like start an excavating company and it would just be like an office with a main and shop and then a large parking lot to store excavators and dump trucks and trailers and stuff.
Okay.
That's what I would be.
Fenced in?
Yeah, fenced in.
Secure?
Yep.
Are you doing that right now or is this just a brand new venture?
It's a brand new, I wanna start it.
Okay.
We have the L C R.
Yeah.
We already have started it.
Okay, wonderful. Any questions?
How much land are you looking for?
Well, I mean, I would have to, you know, the more I could get, the better it would be because I could grow into it. You know, if I had a point eight seven each a lot, I could probably fill that up in the first year and then be too big. You know, it would just be too small for me, so. So, yeah. And it looks like you've got other options that are probably better suited and more financially ready to go than I would be, so.
So if you have this opportunity again at any point in time, please let us know.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
As I'm searching for other properties. Okay. Mike? Am I up?
Yeah.
Well, good to see you again, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for having us up again. I don't know. I don't really agree with your comment that you might not be the best fit. You know, I think that you've got some pretty good opportunities here. When we started looking at your property, it was a decade without any activity going on. We came up and threw out some ideas to you and then took your info and turned it into something that is really out of the box. And it's not an industrial park as you had originally envisioned and the county had envisioned. So I think it's wise for us to just back off for you. I mean, it doesn't really make sense when you've got some options on the table to... You know, the first metal seems like kind of a perfect fit for that side of the property. You can address sound issues. And I thought what you said, Larry, was great as far as the landscaping. Because what David had put together as far as a berm with coniferous trees for site issues would probably also be an excellent alternative for you from a fence as far as sound issues, too. I know that's what the manufacturing, the snowmobile manufacturing company did when we were helping them and the neighbors really appreciated that. So I guess I would say, too, as being... Yeah, I got, you can see I've added a counselor here. I was there since last time. His mom said he could come and see some civic action and go to bed late. I would just ask you to check your gut as far as marijuana, manufacturer harvesting, and is that really what Taylor's Falls wants? And that's just from me and my heart. To you and your thinking, is that what your citizens want? I don't know your city. I've fallen in love with your city. We're working on a couple of other things. We'll probably see you here again. And so if you would just, one, you figure out, then come back if there are any lots left on the west side of the property. We'll probably take another run at it. I do like your vision of small business coming in. Like an excavator seems like a great alternative for me, for me to, for your lots. Those are my thoughts. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now, if it's generally you, what we want to concentrate on for the...
Well, I can say, I think the entire time I've lived here, I've been the moan in the fact that it's so difficult for us to attract industry to Taylor's Falls, just because Minnesota's not very competitive as compared to Wisconsin. And you see tons of activity over there and zero over here. And I look at these two opportunities and, you know, kind of go, wow, finally. To take some of the tax burden off our residential properties would be incredible. And as far as the growing facility, they're gonna go somewhere. We've got a perfect spot for it. We have somebody interested in it. And the metal fabrication, I've worked with Mortonson and K A before. I just, I'm a fan of manufacturing. It's just, it's great. They're well-paying jobs. They're reliable, consistent. I just get excited about the prospects of us having some sort of manufacturing in town. Well, you know, it's been said a couple of times that that whole property out there has sat vacant for so long. And to have, you know, two prospects come in that appear to be pretty good fits for the property and for what they could contribute to our tax base. And, you know, it's a great spot. It's a great location. It's outside of town. We can all, you know... It's all come, you know, so quickly. We do need to sit down and just, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing and all on the same page. But I think they're two great opportunities for our city and two great fits for that property. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is great. What an opportunity we have, at least to consider some of these proposals for this property. I think Hersh Iron Works is a perfect fit for that zone, for that area. I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Taylor's Falls, not only to, you know, reduce taxes, the potential for employees. And it's just phenomenal when you consider what else we have at this point and what's going on. So I'm very excited about that. As far as the west lot goes, I am still concerned about the licensing process and the state of Minnesota actually following through with their intentions. And I think until we have a little more assurance from the state and that legislation comes through where, you know, there's actually something we can count on as far as being able to license and receiving a license, kind of like what you mentioned. I'm a little more hesitant on that part. But as far as Hersh Iron Works goes, I think it's a great opportunity and I think we should take advantage of it sooner rather than later. I would hate to lose them. I think it would be... I mean, it could be detrimental, obviously, to the city, but also to the state. I think these guys have an allegiance, a loyalty to the state of Minnesota. And I think they're trying to honor that. And I think we should facilitate that and help them pursue that and reach their goals.
Yeah, I think we've come across a couple of good candidates for the industrial part there. I could help out the city a lot.
I, it's funny how everything just blew up all of a sudden. Now we got a bunch of people that want to be in Taylor's Falls. And our adventure started a long time ago. And I still see a vision that you bring, Mike. It's interesting how this all happened. So I mean, I do want to figure out how to work with you. That's what my guts always said. I agree with Hirsch coming in on the one side. It just would be silly for us not to jump on allowing that. I wouldn't want him to go across the river. And I think you're right, Troy. I mean, his loyalty is amazing. And the way he speaks about his business and keeping it in Minnesota is, you know, it's, you can tell it's from the heart. So as far as Sean, I could envision it there, too, you know. And it's a lot of jobs. So it's one thing that you've got to really think. We don't have... To bring that type of job to Taylor's Falls is something that we all have to really think about. And I don't know about licensing. I mean, yeah, it's up in the air. Who knows what they're gonna do in St. Paul? I don't think St. Paul knows what they're gonna do. But it'll happen eventually, is my guess. And so it's something that we really have to think about. I promised myself I wasn't gonna do this anymore, but I feel so obligated to listen to the residents all the time.
Quick question. I know, I started off life as a welder. I've welded for many years after I got out of high school. So I like this. So I kind of can guess what these guys, what kind of money they're gonna make out. Is it twenty-something an hour, I imagine? How much are the guys gonna... And by the way, I'm getting older, so I keep thinking, you know, we got to get more youth into young couples with kids. And I can just envision some guy working as a welder over there buying my house. And I got a really nice yard, so it's great for kids. So I think that has so much going for it. And I just don't, and I'd like to know from the building behind you, what kind of, what are the guys, people make an hour that work in a facility like that? Is it what they make at McDonald's? Or would they be able to have like kind of the wages of these guys that are welding? If you have a... Are they making twenty bucks an hour, twenty-five? Is there a standard for that?
Our low-level workers would be in the twenty-five to thirty range. And our higher-ups would be in the hundreds of thousands.
So what are those jobs like? What could you describe, the typical employee that you workers?
We'd have our lead grower that would be the head of all cultivation. And he'd have six teams, six heads of teams that would also have a team below them. And then we'd have just a property manager with a team that would just strictly keep the facility running so the grow team can focus on the cultivation. And the property management crew just keeps the air conditioning, the fans, everything running how efficiently, as efficiently as possible.
And is your legal team involved down at St. Paul at this point to make sure they get that license?
Our lawyer is Jason Teresek. He's probably the face of legalization in Minnesota. And he's working directly with the OCM. And my group has been working directly with the OCM in crafting the laws for the state.
So how's it going? Has he talked to you? Do you get input from him? What...
They're back in...
What does he say the chances are, the percentages? Where are we at?
As far as...
The licensing?
He's guaranteed that we will get the licensing there. Vicente LCP has eighty-eight for eighty-eight in getting their clients licensing in, I think, twelve different states.
He's guaranteed that to you?
He said he would be shocked if we aren't in the first wave.
Would he guarantee that to us?
I, yeah, he would.
Just curious.
I guess the only thing that would worry me is we build it all up and it fell apart. But I mean, I don't think it's gonna...
Along that angle, my business is Midwest Holdings LLC. So that's only the facility. The operator is irrelevant. So if we can build a state-of-the-art facility, anybody could operate it that's qualified. So we'd have options for...
I don't think I'm ready to personally make a decision yet. I think we could make one in February. Have some time as they come out at all. I mean, we're not gonna heat up enough to break ground until March or April anyway, so.
But Elizabeth's request, we could direct her to work with these two, start formulating a plan that could come back to council so we'd be able to make a decision.
Correct. Yeah, I guess I'd be hesitant to have either of these two gentlemen and their proposals, you know, kind of dredge through the sands of too much more bureaucracy because I think they're all familiar with it. And I don't, I don't, I'd like to limit that as much as possible. What, if we did February, Sam, is how does that close your window? How much is that pushing, pushing things for you?
February decision we can make work. We can't go much past March. We'd have to find another option agreement in March, past March meeting.
Is that based on your agreements with St. Craig Falls?
Yes.
And we don't have to decide the whole park at once. You guys really want a Hirsch in there, we could take him set up for the east half and then make the decision on the west half or vice versa.
I guess I would be in favor of that tonight. Is what you're suggesting is tonight?
Uh, it's up to you.
Okay, it's up to us, yeah.
I guess I would like to see what they both would like. So work with them, put it back in the packet on exactly what it would look like. You know, all the details worked out, so we can make a...
Like building places?
Yep.
So kind of a like a preliminary, like a preliminary home permits sort of thing?
And then we can vote on it.
And that would be February eighth?
Presents itself that we have the information before the February meeting.
No, that's something to do.
I'd be happy to. Hey, Elizabeth, if you can get this stuff together before the February meeting, we'd be happy to do a special meeting.
Sure.
No?
Okay.
I don't know what you, I don't know timeframe.
That I talked to you about a day later?
Yeah.
I gotta just see what all this entails.
Okay.
You can cancel our meeting if you want.
That was wondering if the twelfth would give you enough time to do that.
The next twelve?
That would be the next council meeting.
Can we have it canceled?
So three, one, two, three full weeks?
Oh, three weeks? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can aim for that.
So February twelfth, is that what he said?
Yeah, that's the next meeting. If for some reason that all comes together a lot faster, just let us know and we can talk about it, a special meeting date.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Sean?
Sean? Yes, sir.
Sam?
All right. How you doing?
Good to see you.
Thanks, Adam. You're up. I want to hear about the turnout here. I know we're gonna review the funds because there was some discrepancy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, no, I can, yeah, sure. Well, first of all, I want to thank Jake for all this work that he did with the numbers. There were some things missing that we did not have, that we did not have. And I want to thank him for going, for looking into that. I certainly want to thank Michelle. There were a couple of issues as far as insurance and then salaries, which are kind of tough for Jake to handle. He's a great...
Oh, I see.
However, I think in talking with Jake and even council member Throde a little bit about this, our staff is doing a fantastic job. I mean, Shun was really doing a fantastic job on this. What it did do, what we're missing, however, were some fund balances. One of that was on insurance and then, and then on report. So, and I, and I, and I, every cop is, everybody's gonna work to get those in so we start having those on record basis. That's part of the judge's report. But what it did point out to me is that's not only important, that it be transparent to the people of Taylor's Falls, but we also rely on the, well, council members, department heads and whatever, when we do our budgeting or when we, you know, we make suggestions on what we'd like to do with funds. So I was going to hold this off the agenda, but we do have some proposals, some suggestions that need work done. And I would be very grateful if you could bring those up and just talk about them a little bit and then we can decide what we want to do.
Sure. And to be fair, I didn't realize this before I was on council, that all the wages aren't paid at the end of the year, similar to what we're paid. So they're not accrued over time. So you can't really do a very good job of budget forecasting in the wages category anyway.
It comes on the same before.
That's right.
But Troy mentioned the insurance piece. And that's one thing I've been, I was working with Marion. We just weren't able to get it completed before she left, is accurately accounting for all the insurance costs by department or fund. And I'll be working with Michelle on that. The year ended, the fire department with just over a $6,000, almost a $6,100 positive variance to budget. But we hadn't accounted for any insurance costs in that. And that ate up all of that balance just a little bit. So when all is said and done, you'll be right, basically, almost at zero, which is where we want to be. We're spending our money where we need to and when we need to and not going over it. So the fire department is a general fund account, which means they don't carry a fund balance. All their, Jake didn't spend and his team didn't spend their money. It would just go everywhere.
Trap acting.
It's not like someone like the enterprise funds or some of the other accounts that who carry their own fund balance. Like the library fund carries its own fund balance. Community center does as well. In the 2024 budget, the fire department has $9,000 in a line item for new equipment and $5,000 in a line item for turnout here. Couple of things to note. We did receive this public safety funds. Couple of things to note, we did receive this public safety funds. It was just over forty-six thousand dollars. That came in the day after Christmas last year and has been deposited. So we have some options, and we don't, I don't believe we need to make a decision tonight, but there are some options. We could review, approve a budget variance request and just have the department spend more than was budgeted. That's an option we always have. Obviously, that would reduce our fund balance, which isn't in great shape. Anyway, I don't think it's where we want it to be. We could put some funds in the, there's also a, an account separate from the fire department account. It's called the fire equipment fund. That has a current balance, I can't remember, seventy, almost seventy-four hundred dollars. I'm not sure how the money got there, and where it came from or when, but it's sitting there. There's a fund, fund balance, almost seventy-four hundred dollars that could be used for this. So there's probably an endless list of what we could do, but we have some dollars sitting there. We have the fire equipment fund and we have the public safety funds, neither of which would impact our general fund balance. So depending what the plan indeed was, those are the funds that I would recommend we tap into. And if it's not urgent, like today, they do have fourteen thousand dollars for equipment in their current operating budget. And if we wanted to take some time and talk more about the public safety funds, how much, if any, we were going to put towards fire department, turnout gear, whatever else we wanna look at. But those are really the options. My goal, my, my goal personally would be not to affect the general fund balance. Until that's at such a point that we all feel comfortable, and I don't think we're there yet.
And do we know how much we're looking for, Jake?
Rough estimates for our current roster add up nineteen, add up possible twenty-five, or probably something close to about ten thousand. That was the plan to roll last year into this year's, and we made that purchase. Yeah, it's, we don't have any exact quotes yet. We're still waiting to try to get vendors up here for measurements. It's been a little slow. We've had some turnovers and vendor representatives, so.
So between the turnout gear budget that we have in the operating budget and the fire equipment fund, seventy-four hundred, it would seem like you have the funds to do what you need?
A little over four thousand of that new equipment budget was spent at the first of the year for a new thermal imaging camera that went down in December. So we're a little, we're shorter than that. This was current purchase at the first of the year, we didn't have that. And then we always try to, see, everything has a shelf life, road rescue gear, everything, so we try to keep up on that. So we have to look through the budget and see where, where, what we wanted to cut as far as what we have planned for acquiring for this year, for this year's new equipment budget.
So the turnout gear has five thousand budgeted, and then we have the balance in the other non-operating fund of seventy-four hundred, so.
I, I think we could approve like up to ten grand, and we have these, those two funds. That way you can, when you find a rep to get up here.
Yeah, that's the fun part. Um, I do have a question. Have we thought about public safety fund, or what the council intends to use that for? Have we, I know it's just been probably a new thing in your head, it's rare, but we should have those discussions.
Yeah, we, all we've been talking about is the fact that we have, we have. Where, first our talk was we're getting it, and now we've gotten it, so.
And did they give you any guidelines?
There are some guidelines. It has to be public safety related, and they specifically mentioned police and fire. Like, we couldn't put a security system in this building with those funds. We can pay our shares department monthly fee, quarterly fee, we can add, pay our fire staff, we can buy equipment such as this. One thing I'm not sure about is if we can put this money towards a future capital purchase like the fire truck. That I'm not sure about, I just don't know. There's no limitation or sunset on when the funds need to be spent. We don't have to report anything. But good internal practice would be we should document every cent we spend on it, so if asked, we can share it.
It would be nice, just for council's reference, as if we were to get a portion of that, what would we use it for? It would be to ensure medical equipment supply is funded and backing for backup runs, which is a little over seventy percent of our volume. Just for you guys as references, where we would put a fund like that.
So upgrade medical, medical equipment?
Yeah, medical equipment and, and, what else were we gonna put it to? Medical, it was medical equipment and then, that's pretty much it, just for.
Well, medicine, too.
Yeah.
So we're looking for, yeah, we're looking for it to get in medical direction to help enhance our capabilities. So that would include new, some newer medical, medical equipment and medications that we're able to administer. So, yeah.
And it doesn't specifically say it in the legislation, but I believe their intent, their, their hope was most jurisdictions would spend the money on new stuff, like adding the sheriff's department, adding a deputy, or a police department, adding an officer, or a fire department, adding new types of things. I believe it specifically said it can be used to pad your general fund balance.
Right, right. So if they were to either or, medical equipment or the turnout gear for the public safety money?
PBE falls under motion regulations, so I'd have to stick with the, we'd have to stick with PBE.
Okay, okay. I, I didn't know if that would, that would be an issue or not, but I, I just kind of assumed everything would fall under the, you know, as far as the public safety money, almost everything you would need or require would be, would be eligible, I would think.
Yeah, for sure.
Right.
That, I would agree.
It's nothing we need a decision on tonight. You guys can take this in full and decide what we wanna do. I'm good with using the two funds, the, the extra, not the extra fund, but the non-operating fund and then the turnout fund. But with that option, then I'm looking into the public safety money and see what we, what you guys wanna do with that, too. So something to chew on and decide what we wanna do.
Yeah, I think as long as we know the money is there for them to use, all you have to do is come back with a proposal and we can approve that.
Yep.
We can put numbers together and put them in the paper, sharpen it up, and let you guys look at it.
So we wanna approve tonight the turnout gear not to exceed ten thousand? So Lady can get working on that?
We could. I wouldn't have to come back to council then.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, you guys, all right.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, let's have a motion in a second.
Okay.
And this would be coming from this?
The, the equipment fund and turnout gear fund.
Should be transferred, okay.
So I'll make a motion that we approve an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the fire department to purchase turnout gear. Funding for the expense would be taken from the fire department general fund, the five eighty-one account or line item, which has the five thousand dollar budgeted amount. And then also to tap into the fire equipment fund, which is G four zero seven dash one zero one zero zero. And that has a current balance of seventy-three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
And what was the other fund you mentioned?
Their operating, the gen, general, general operating account.
Yeah, I will second that.
All right, any other discussion, gentlemen? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Next on the agenda is, well, we moved up approving or discussion on the economic development commission application of Molly Irish. And then we'll chat up Fred Beckhold's extension, and then we can finalize the resolution.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
So I bow for it because it'll give us a corner. I think Molly would be, with her knowledge of real estate, and I think she'd be a wonderful person to have on EDC with that knowledge. We could use more.
How many would that put you at now?
Um, with, that would put us, counting me, four.
Okay. And how many seats are there, seven?
Yeah, one's an alternate, so six and one's an alternate.
Getting close then.
Yep, for sure. So those are my two cents, I think, I mean, it would be.
Well, I think Molly would be excellent on EDC as well. Is there any concern of a real estate agent, whoever it is, being a conflict of interest in economic development in our city? Any thoughts?
I would think just the opposite.
Fritz?
It would depend on whether or not there was a project or some other thing in which she had a direct potential financial benefit. By accident, that no, it would be no reason.
Okay. And everything they do comes here for approval, so she wouldn't be a decision maker. She'd be a planner and recommender.
And if we ever got into something like that, we could ask her to.
She could refuse it, yes.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, your comment?
I have no one.
Okay. Okay.
No, I'll make a motion that we accept application of Molly Irish to the economic development commission.
I'll second.
Can we put a term on there?
Oh, yeah, well, it would be effective the February, so what, three years?
Are you going January to December, or are you, are you going from year to late today?
Well, I guess I would, I mean, we could bear, I would go, yeah, first.
Yeah, so twenty-four, end of twenty-six, so December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six would be her term end.
Okay.
So does he have to rejoin or not?
I don't think so. I mean, we didn't, we didn't have, when we voted for Diane's, we, we didn't. I mean, cause it's, is, isn't it already three years? It's been three years in our.
It is. There's, you know, we talked about like the planning commission. It says upon establishment of the, whatever commission it is, and then they stagger the dates.
Sure.
Four year, two year, and three years, so that way you're not having everybody quit at the same time for EDC. You know, it doesn't matter, you know, Molly having a three-year term is good. I guess just wanted to clarify, but to be consistent, and then for, I guess we do have Diane, who here is expiring in twenty twenty-six as well. So that's not a problem for EDC, but for consistency, I guess, when we talk about planning commission to put a term on it.
Okay. Yeah, cause we out, we, this year, Fred, next year, and then two in twenty twenty-six, so we should be, okay, so we're not gonna lose everybody at once if they decide not to rejoin. So, all right, all in favor of approving Molly Irish's application with expiring on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, say aye?
Aye.
All right, and then we did have a wonderful meeting with the planning commission, and Fred would like to extend his term to the end of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And that will help us stagger the planning commission, and that was what was, why we're discussing that, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we extend Fred's planning commission term to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion, questions?
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
You know, one thing we wanna do, too, did we get their application? We need to move them. We didn't move Park and Rack.
Right, the application to.
Yep, so, um, let's go through and just discuss Kevin, Dev and Rich, and then we'll approve the resolution.
Okay. So the library and parks.
Yep.
I'm not sure that the library is included.
That's right, because they're not a commission technically.
And I didn't find anything in our code stating partners or, or was listed, so I would rule that in that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that our organizational meeting, just a point of view to the council is on there.
Yep.
And before we go too much further, do we have years? Are there any issues, John, with the expiring HPC at all? Okay.
According to booklet I get, it's a one-year term.
Okay, so they just got back to you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, it's, uh, do we wanna put all three together? You wanna do one at a time, move on?
Uh, whatever you wanna do is fine.
I'm excited to put them in a whole, almost whole, right?
Almost whole, because you, and an alternate, but, you know, the, the people that submitted applications are dedicated to preserving our current parks and improving the ones we have. Kevin Schuman thankfully stood up to head up, I'm sure, the Peony program. And, you know, Dev is on there, too. Dev has been involved with the parks and recreation for many years, especially the Cherry Hill Park. She organized and coordinated the first wildly successful fundraiser, the, the Oscar Gala and chicks-only party. I don't know how many remember that, but it was, it was a great success.
I remember Oscar.
That's right, Joe Easley.
Joe Easley, yeah, sure.
And so she's, you know, willing to step up again. And then our friend here, Rich Smith, has, you know, loves living here in Taylor's Falls, although I just heard you put your house up for sale.
When he's up and going, I'm gonna sell it to one of his employees.
And so, you know, it makes a great group. Anybody else that would like to join, we welcome. And I'm happy to be the liaison again, because we've done a lot of good things in Parks and Rec over the years. You know, establishing the Cherry Hill Park and working at Cherry Hill Park, the tot lot by the, on West Street, with playground equipment and swing set, and, you know, all kinds of other things. There are cleanup, road cleanup on highways, County Road sixteen. I'd like to get back into all of that. And we're also having some conversation about doing our folk festival again in the fall. And so that was, again, Rich and Molly did that pre-pandemic. And then a very successful thing for, and a good thing for our citizens to get out and do something during the, you know, the non-active winter, fall, winter months. Can I ask you a question? Do you, do you have to be a resident of the city of Taylor's Falls to be on a commission? I think so, yes.
It depends on the commission. The EDC can be up to twenty-five percent business owners and non-residents. So I have the section to the code with me that was in the packet for each of the commissions. And it has a membership listed and their terms. So kind of bouncing back to HPC, it's not in the code book I have, it doesn't say one-year terms, it's three-year terms. And then the same as all the other ones, it's staggered terms. So I would say we should maybe get those terms reestablished for HPC as well. But for EDC specifically.
I was thinking parks specifically. And the reason I'm asking is the Lions Club maintains two very large parks, and I think it would be of benefit to have them on. But we only have Troy, myself, and Mike Lenz, who are actually residents of Taylor's Falls on the Lions Club. You know, I think one of the requirements, you know, sort of requirements, was to have a Lions member. And many of Leo, Nelson. And, um, many of Leo Nelson was our guy from the Lions, so, you know, if you have somebody willing to. I would bring it to our next meeting and ask for a volunteer, if we can have one, if Lions Club could have one.
And if we could have.
One not resident.
Vico license. Oh, okay, cool. I'll bring that, and if you're okay with that, I'll bring it to our next one.
We'd like to have our Vico license back too, if we could get that.
Good luck. We might be glad to get that back.
Okay. All right. Um, any other comments on our three applicants? I need a motion in a second to approve Kevin Schuman.
I do have a comment. So we're gonna create, since we are going from zero members to three, which is now the time to stagger the terms. Have one be one year, one be two, one be three, and then when they renew, everybody will be three and will be set, and nobody's allowed to leave.
Well, we could, couldn't we do that at the first meeting? Or do we have to say, okay, so Kevin Schuman's gonna be the first one year, Dev's gonna be two years, and then Rich will be three years? Do we have to do that now? Designate that person or just?
I'm not sure. I think we should establish their terms.
We should, or how about the commission? Why wouldn't the commission do that?
Yeah, it should have maybe been done before it came here, yeah.
Well.
Well, it couldn't, because I couldn't meet.
Well, that's true, but that one they can, they could do that at the first meeting.
Yeah, so it's the best way to move forward with that.
I guess I would approve it as it is and let them stagger after they meet.
Sure. Do they have to bring them their terms back to council?
Yep.
Okay.
Cause you're gonna have to adapt, right, one way or the other, you're gonna have to adapt.
Okay, and I just wanna get that in my register.
So we'll make a motion to accept the applicants for Park and Rack with the, um, contingent that they come back after their first meeting with a schedule of terms.
And it would be all commissions except for HPC, which we will take up next month? You, you mentioned something about the terms.
Yeah, I think it's the same for HPC.
Okay, Molly could do that in their first meeting as well. Okay, good.
Okay.
They'll vote before they change their minds.
All right. All right, all in favor say aye of approving Kevin Devonridge?
Aye.
Okay, can you repeat who moved and who seconded?
I moved.
Okay, thank you. Am I really seconded?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we can go ahead and, uh, move forward with approving resolutions, twenty-four dash zero one dash zero two. With the, yeah, cause we do, I mean, we just, I did get an email too that, from Diane on the library, they're, they're not a commission, so I wanted to make sure we understood that.
They're bored.
Yes, they're bored, so. Uh, and I assured her that I would bring that up, so we are, we're all good there, so I need a mo, a motion in a second to approve this resolution.
So how do we do, sorry, Terry, you can drop. Um, how do we do that with waiting for the terms?
They will come back to us, once they have their first meeting, they will establish the terms. Is that correct?
We just, we just look at.
Should we pass this one and then pass it and know their resume?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to bring it back then. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
When is your first meeting then? Well, the, you know, the official meeting date is the third Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
So that would be this Wednesday, but it's a little close to, you know, having a meeting to pull it all together, so it would be, um, February.
Okay.
So the margin beginning from February. So February, uh, twenty-first? Twenty-sixth, wait a minute. That's much. February twenty-first.
Okay, so that, we'd have to wait until March?
Twenty-sixth would be our second meeting in February.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's fine. That works? Okay, good, good.
Thank you. So we need to have, um, we need a motion.
Yep. So can I get a motion to adopt the resolution, contingent on getting dates staggered?
I will make the motion, uh, to approve resolution twenty-four dash zero one dash zero two, contingent on stagger dates coming back.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Tim?
Keep this brief. Um, last meeting, we approved procurement of equipment for Public Works, uh, but we asked them, um, if they could to find additional proposals. Uh, they did that, and we had three, um, apples-to-apples, uh, proposals. And Jeff's Small Engine, which we, um, originally approved, contingent upon getting the other proposals, uh, still came in low. Um, the other companies were Minnesota Equipment and Hugo Equipment Company. So I have, um, all three proposals here. I will get them in the shell to put in the file, so when we're audited, we can go back and refer to this, that we did get three proposals.
Okay.
And I think we're getting the equipment this week.
Thank you to Kevin for doing that, or Paul Ward.
Tim, Paul, make sure that you hear.
Paul Ward, true.
All right, thank you, Tim. We'll move on to new business now. Public Works, uh, the AeroTech quote for the HVAC unit in the packet. Just so I know what we're talking about, it's the fire unit that controls the heat downstairs, correct?
It's the one that controls the heat downstairs.
Yes, right, yeah.
I'm not sure which proximity is on the roof, but yes.
So just, so everybody knows, it's, doesn't work, so there's space here just downstairs right now.
We had a catastrophic failure, technically, technical term for it. Um, the fan basically blew up, disintegrated, and caused a lot of damage to the unit. And so this one is slightly less than the other one, um, but I just wanted to note that it's a four-ton unit, not a five-ton unit, so that's probably why the price difference is there. So it's very competitive with the last one, AeroTech did, AeroTech did our last, um, installation. Um, we did have different proposals on that as well. I would recommend moving forward with AeroTech. They did a great job last night.
Any questions?
Um, well, I do have a question. Do you want to make the motion to.
I'll first.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to replace the rooftop unit that has failed.
And I'll second that. And my question is, which fund are we pulling this out of?
Yeah, that's a great question, uh, which I was prepared to answer that. Um, cause I believe we have tapped out our special projects fund. So.
We have, well, I'm showing twelve, six, forty-five left in the special projects.
But we use, I believe we, at our last meeting, we approved those funds to go towards the equipment that Public Works just got. So I believe that fund will be zero.
We just haven't been to the court yet.
Right, we haven't been to the court yet. Um, there's an option of using the capital equipment fund. Or just going operational as it, put it in the general fund account for this building. Which would be mostly unlegitimate, I would guess.
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess I'd be, I think we should identify and withdraw the money from one of the funds. So we know where it came from, what we're dedicating it to, instead of just pulling it out of the general fund. Uh, it does look like we have that money in the, um, capital equipment fund.
Which is earmarked for the fire truck.
Um, the other option, I suppose we could transfer if we wanted to, to, to the correct fund. But I guess I, I would, I would like to suggest we identify a fund to take this out of the public, well, that's not gonna work.
And I think the only non-operating fund that would really make sense would be that, um. Capital fund. Capital Equipment Fund four sixty dash one zero one zero zero, that has a current balance of two hundred and forty-seven thousand three oh one. And that's what's, what, just short of about thirteen thousand five hundred, if I remember right, the AeroTech report.
Thirteen four sixty-two.
I mean, I, I do know, and thank you, Larry, it is, it is for the, the fire truck, but we should identify, you know, we should take it out of the fund instead of just, if that's the correct fund, then, then so be it.
I hate to take it out of there, but I mean, it is what it is. I mean, unfortunate, we don't, you know, when this thing comes up, we're just not sitting. All our funds aren't sitting great right now, so we gotta find it somewhere. So I guess I would be for, I, I, as much as a pains man, I said the capital fund really makes more sense right now.
I would agree. Would say the other thing that, um, I'll work, me and I worked with Kevin on is putting together, um, a fire plan, because this building has roofing. It has, um, some exterior maintenance, tuck pointing and caulking that needs to be done. We'll just do a full assessment on the building carpet while covering windows and just put together a nice package on when we think things will need to be replaced and how much that we expect that to cost. Which we should really have for all our departments, fire and Public Works as well.
So if we have to revise the motion, I will do so if we pay the AeroTech invoice for the HVAC unit of the capital equipment fund for thirteen four sixty-two.
Okay. I would second that. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nothing personal, but I oppose.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Next, uh, new business is, uh, Public Works, uh, the Generac for well number three, repair quote.
Yes, Lee, you wanna take this one?
Yeah. Uh, Tim and I talked to Kevin, we had a smell of office, regulator wasn't working properly.
Never.
Or did he?
I was just joking.
Generator, backup generator out of well number three. And so then we talked to him about, um. Just getting Federated Coke to come out and take care of the, take care of the regulator like they did on the other, other one. Actually, I'm not sure if this was the same one, might have been bad regulator, but I think it'd be quite a bit cheaper than going through, uh, the alley services there.
Okay.
And those guys worked on them all the time there at Federated. So that's what we're gonna do with that.
So it'd be the lower of the two, whichever came in cheaper. So we'd approve the amount that Kevin has here, but hopefully we can bring it in lower than that.
Yeah. Okay.
I would say both, both the iss, the, the issues that created this situation was a power surge back in, that public power loss we had back in December, um, impacted both of these, um, units.
So was there anything that you can do to these? I mean, to put in place so that we don't, because odds are, we're gonna have another power issue and.
Right, yeah, I was wondering that myself. I, I'm not familiar with some sort of, um, UPS or clean, you know, something that'll filter out that kind of thing, we could look. But I'm just not familiar with it on a generator. Just because of their sandal nature, I'm not sure.
Okay. Any, anything else?
Nope, not on that one.
So we'll need a motion in a second to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve, this was for, what, uh, was this for the lift station first one?
Generator.
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 Generator well three. Oh, for well three. And I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the generator repair, uh, as proposed for well three, um. Not to exceed the amount provided, uh, hopefully we can bring that in lower. Direct Kevin to check another vendor.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion, Larry? Tim, anything else you wanna?
Nope.
All right.
Yep, um, which fund will this be coming out of?
This will come out of the water, um, fund, the enterprise fund.
Balance one oh four three seventy-three now?
It sounds more right. So this does not hit our general fund.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay. All right, uh, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, to the sewer lift station?
Same thing.
Yes.
Only there's no option for the, the red or repairs, so, um, this is what it is. And this one would come out of the sewer enterprise fund.
Okay. All right, I need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
All right, any questions, Fred?
Just looking for the sewer enterprise fund and the number.
Um, that is G six zero two dash one zero one zero zero. It has a current fund balance of one thirty-four, nine eighty-eight.
That's what led me off, I said sewer fund. I was looking for sewer enterprise fund. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That was it.
Yeah, I don't know why they're not describing that way, but.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are moving on to, um, we have an office risk assessment and an audit quote from the EZIT guys. We're also working with FitWorks, um, getting quotes. This discussion is just for the audit of the risk assessment. And, um, Elizabeth and Sherry and everybody's been kind of digging into this and we're learning a lot about technology. And right now, we're kind of finding out that the more digital we're getting and the more documentation we're getting digital, we really need to make sure that we're safe and secure. And so that's where this assessment came in, and we also learned by working with the EZIT guys on this, is getting this assessment is also going to qualify us for getting a grant. That can help pay for what all, pretty much if we needed to upgrade our. Intranet, I guess you could say, or our network, yeah, our network. But we need this assessment done, otherwise we can't fill out the paperwork.
I think it was more cybersecurity here.
Okay.
On new equipment.
Okay.
But it's a little.
Was that a state grant? For federal, cause EZIT is over in Wisconsin.
Yeah, they, they work both sides. He, they brought it up, they actually, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he said that, I mean, part of their packages is they, if we're a client, they will fill that out, but first thing we have to do is get the assessment done. Um, it doesn't mean that we're locked in to use that going forward if we make any changes. Um, that will be the next meeting we have, we're gonna have three quotes from, uh, different IT companies to show us their package.
And it would be good if I had EZIT come in, they can audit what BitWorks already has set up, um, and then, and BitWorks can also assess themselves as well. Cause it sounds like, um, previous consultant go with what BitWorks recommendation was. So there's some room for growth on what BitWorks has done not too.
Okay.
And I agree, I think it'd be nice to have a somewhat independent third party.
Right.
Obviously, they have an interest, but, um, to go through and, and do the risk assessment.
I'm looking at this, uh, email from BitWorks. It's a little convoluted. Do we have, what, would the price be? Does it depend on how long they're here or?
Yeah, they go by the hour, and I think in that, in the top line of the email, it gave you the range. He said on the phone, like around three hundred dollars, how long it takes them to do it. Just based on the price difference, I don't know if we're quite comparing apples to apples.
And do we know anything about the grant that EZIT said? What amount was it? Did I miss that?
Oh, what was it?
Cause that would upset.
Thirty to forty thousand or something.
Forty thousand, yeah.
And he said that it's for, uh, populous, like municipalities with populations under twenty-five thousand, so he's like, you guys will very, very likely get that grant.
I, just being like, kind of watching and being involved in this, I really feel like we should use it, uh, outside, there, one that we haven't, then just to see what. They're one that we haven't, then just to see what it looks like right now, how, you know, I just, so that's, I mean, I guess I'm leaning more towards we should hire EZIT guys for this. I know the price difference is huge, but I, like you said, Elizabeth, I really don't know if it's apples to apples.
Yeah, I don't know, but EZIT, they're the ones who brought it up. They were proactive about it in the first place. That's one of the things that I noticed with them is they're asking questions. What do you have? You know, and they want to be proactive with the issues and they don't want to sit there selling grants.
Well, we could, we could make this not to exceed, we could approve it, not to exceed and ask them to charge us only if they put ten hours in. It would only be a thousand dollars.
I think.
I think they're just a flat quote.
They're a flat rate, they don't go by the hour, so that's it.
Yeah, he said, we were on a Zoom call with them and he said it's fifteen hundred up to fifteen devices. So basically, all have to bring their devices in, laptops, cell phones, they log in and they get access to the network and they do.
It's very thorough.
Yeah, threat assessment.
So their quantity is just their, of fifteen hours is just their, that's what it is.
Yeah, fifteen units is what it, so on here, it looks like hours we get, so fifteen, like up to fifteen, if we had fifteen computers or fifteen.
Okay. That makes more sense then.
Okay.
Yeah, so even if we have less than, we're going to have less than that.
Yeah.
So, but that's kind of what you get, so saying that's our flat rate.
I agree, I still think we, I still think we go with EZIT. Just because if it's outside, somebody knew it, sounds like they're definitely going to do a thorough job. Right.
And this isn't to replace, yeah, we're just doing the assessment.
Right, right.
So. And they said they work with BitWorks and BitWorks would get them into the system, maybe get administration.
Yeah, they work with them before.
So. We need a motion in a second if we want to either approve EZIT guys or BitWorks.
I'll make the motion to approve the EZIT invoice amount.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, or are you any comments?
Well, just one thought. We had discussed the money that we got from the state. I'm trying to remember what we called it, public safety money, that we're disqualified for that. I mean, it's, it's a case of a cyber attack or, you know, a natural disaster. You know, we are the eyes and ears of the community when it comes to, you know, websites and all that. And, you know, I mean, I agree with EZIT, that's one thing. But where the money comes from, that's what I'm suggesting, so.
No, I can see that, I mean, we could dig into it. If it does, I say we use that fund.
Sure.
I remember looking over, I think, we might have to stretch it a little bit, if I remember the last time I looked at that.
Okay.
Because I was asking for something else and I think council member wrote, I think we're having a discussion about it and goes, nah, it's not going to work. I can't remember what it was, but if that's not going to work, I'm not sure that's going to work. I mean, we could look at it. I would, if we are not able to use that, I am curious what fund we'd be pulling this out of as well.
General fund would be administration probably or on, on the building.
Do we have an administration or is that not here? I don't see it, I just think just.
Yes, not on here. We have administration that's forty-one four hundred under the general. So it'd be one oh one forty-one four hundred, administration. Repairs and maintenance, equipment, there's two thousand.
There's nothing there that I've uncovered.
Perfect. Good to go. And if I could make the request that we have put those funds on our next report for next month or some of our meetings. You were able to get to them, Tim, so you must have had access to it. It'd be nice to be able to see those same time. Okay, good, I'm okay, thank you.
First public safety fund, see if we can stretch it.
Stretch it.
Go to the administration fund. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving the EZIT labor risk or cybersecurity assessment using public safety or administration funds that public safety can't do use, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a quote, getting a new desktop computer for Elizabeth. I know she is with EZIT, they looked at her laptop that she currently has, which is a twenty-twenty, but they recommended that with the amount of processing and work she does, this would be a lot faster. And it's, right now, she's having some hiccups. It's, the computer's jumping a little on her and it's not performing all the time. So she went out and worked with them on getting a replacement issue, so that was for thirteen hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-six cents.
Yeah, I've just, I've been having hiccups for the seven months I've been here and it's really costing a lot of efficiency and staff. And I don't think I can go another summer without an improvement of some sort. And we, I've been working with BitWorks for six months on this and not much improvement.
And how old is this fund that you have now, EZIT?
It's only a twenty-twenty. EZIT recommends new laptops every three to five years in the business. I think that's very common across the board, I've heard that from multiple sources as well. So it's on its way out. Could be stretched, but I don't think it should be stretched through other buildings even.
Or at your expense.
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could limp along till March. But it's got, it's, I think it's got to be done.
What do you think's wrong with it? I mean, is it? You said it's.
I don't know, I would be taking it to the IT guys. Yeah, it's.
And you did, and that's what they said. They said it's done.
Yeah, they said it might be good, like, to use for like a backup laptop in case somebody needs to work from home, but for the amount of like processing, and I haven't even clearly started really running it. As soon as we start doing mapping on it, it's gonna, they won't sustain the mapping that we need.
We can't turn it in to them, they wouldn't take it in as a used, you know.
Like a trade-in?
Yeah, trade-in.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
Good.
Can we ask them?
Do you put in a little bit of money for it? I don't know how that works, but.
I think one thing too we should do, I understand the need for this. I mean, obviously, we've spoken a lot about this last few weeks. I do think we probably should get one more quote just to follow suit. I mean, I'm guessing they're all the same price, no matter where you go, within a couple hundred bucks. But just protocol, maybe have BitWorks give us a quote too on the same.
Yeah, BitWorks, BitWorks could give you a quote on similar equipment, right?
Yes. I would maybe go to.
Or another raise, I mean, it's.
Right, right, right. And then there's the trade-in option too, when you talk to both of them.
Have you traded that before?
No. Doesn't hurt to ask though.
Okay.
Some places do.
They might throw it away for refurbishment.
Especially if they got a big processor.
Or a semiconductor.
No, that is right. Well, I think, I guess I would.
She's seen the lit for a.
Cleaning and everything is really critical, that we have, you know, up-to-date equipment so she can.
Sure.
You know, efficiently.
Should we approve not to exceed this, just pending getting another quote?
That'd be the best idea, I think.
How are we going to pay for this one? If the administration one's not used, we could do that.
No, that would have been my question sooner or later, so we might as well find out.
I'm joking. Well, I just want to comment too, they did also say that we probably should have a desktop for Sherry too, so, not immediately, but they said we should all be running desktops in the office. They're just more powerful. So just know that that's eventually going to come.
Well, we might learn something on the security assessment too and audit.
Yep.
They might have some suggestions.
Most of them.
And how long would they be, it was like a thirty-day risk assessment?
Yep. So, I'm not really finding much, so we just.
Is there no office equipment or anything? I thought I, maybe not.
There's new equipment, two hundred dollars.
That's hands.
You have a lot of faith in our older. But if we we are able to use the public safety funds for the cybersecurity assessment.
We have enough.
We have enough. So I would say it's just a comfort in the right spot.
Yep. Under office equipment? Just go negative?
Administration one oh one dash four one four zero zero dash five eight zero is new equipment.
Can you cross your fingers that the public safety money can be used?
Cross both of your fingers, cross all ten of your fingers.
Okay. So, Tim, do you want to make a motion?
Oh, sure.
I know, I'm sorry, you should.
I would make a motion that we approve the procurement of the new laptop or desktop. Okay, desktop for the zoning administrator. Price not to exceed the amount proposed by EZIT. But we also direct zoning administrator to solicit additional proposals. And we go with the most cost-effective, light-for-light. Cost for, the expense for this would go to administration one oh one dash four one four zero zero dash five eight zero. New equipment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Larry. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are done for tonight. So our next meeting is February twelfth at six P M. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Need a motion in a second for adjournment. Make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have, you had a pretty funny question, I'm sure I hear.
Oh, no.
So if you build a cultivating growing facility like that? I wonder if that's still on.
I'll come over.
And it seems quite unlikely that it would ever be the case. Something that would.
Yeah, I mean, we use the same technology and stuff that, funny enough, when we were beginning. I don't know about the financial end of growing vegetables or whatever. But one of the first places we looked at, they had, they used, growing lettuce and tomato, isn't it? They had tanks and a lot of that. So, yeah, I mean, it's all the same. They just don't require as much, right? Odor control and.
As much, we're much more intensive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But no, I mean, that's the, it could have.
It's not.
If there's, if there's a natural disaster.
That's a big question that, for me, because I, well, what if you don't get a license? Like, well, I'm not actually applying for license, I'm just building facilities to rent to operators. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But assuming that if they follow through, some groups are going to get the license and even a ready-made location that they're. Yeah.